Rise. I. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
The Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. And justice. Thank you, everybody, for showing up this evening. It's always a pleasure. So we have a motion to approve the agenda. A motion made by Jean. Is that second by you, Josh? Who?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor will take a roll call vote. Michaeline?
Hi.
Mimi?
Hi.
Jean?
Hi.
Josh?
Hi.
And I'm assuming Mark's out there somewhere?
Yep.
Hi.
Okay, thank you.
Pete should be, Pete had logged on before, but he is not here now. So as soon as he comes in, I will indicate that he's here.
Okay.
Mark is in the room. He's just not on camera.
Yeah, she was here, so I think I'll just keep my video up.
Okay, we can hear him. So public comment. Corinne, anything?
No, I have not received a public comment.
Okay. Anybody have anything they want to report from anybody? Okay, consent items. We have a motion to approve these consent items. Anybody? Anybody?
Uh, so moved.
Okay, thank you, Josh. I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mimi. Perfect. Thank you, Mimi. Okay, discussion.
Um, just a point of in information, Corinne, can you briefly, I don't, I mean, the difference between tier two, tier three, and tier four? And why some of the teachers, they don't, they're not tiered? I mean, there were tiers for some and not for others. Can you give just a, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, but I would be curious. I think it would be good to have that information.
If I were on the seniority list, I would not have a tier because I'm too old. So those of us that got a license before the tiers were in place, we are just licensed. After tiers went into place, tier four. Some have gotten the tier four when they renew their license, then they get the tier. So when I renew my teaching license this year, I should be getting a tier four. Tier four means highly qualified, fully licensed, highly, and so then tier three means that they've taken all the training. They've done all the coursework. They have passed everything, except they have not yet done that MTLE, Minnesota test. Then tier two means that they have done teacher training, but they have not finished all the qualifications. We have some tier two who are actually finishing up student teaching as they're in their classroom. Winona State has done that with several teachers now. So they are teaching as they are student teaching. That's a tier two. Tier one means that they have not done their teacher prep. That's the old community expert.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor will do a roll call again. We'll start with Mark. You out there?
Yep, Mark's there, isn't he?
Michaeline?
Hi.
Jean?
Hi.
Mimi?
Hi.
Josh?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Discussion items. You got the auditor on hold there?
And? Luke?
Hey, guys, I'm here.
Okay, Luke, I've got it set, so you can share your screen at this point.
Okay, all right, all right, guys, I'm gonna try and share my screen here. Just have to have you let me know and make sure that you can see it. You should be able to see this big guy in a bike. Can you see that?
Yep.
Full screen? Okay, perfect. All right, so audit this year went well. We're just wrapping things up right now. We're waiting on just a few quick little things to actually hit the issue button, but we have basically final draft numbers are 100% final, solid. We won't have any changes with anything like that. It's really just a formality as far as issuing the statements, but numbers are final that I'm going to go through here in a minute. As far as the audit goes, we're issuing a clean audit report. No, no internal control findings, no compliance findings with yellow book or Minnesota legal compliance or anything like that. Gwen does a great job and had everything in order, so we didn't have, you know, any issues or concerns or areas that, you know, we're concerned about at all. So all good things there. A few, few quick notes here before I dive into some numbers. So we had implemented GASB statement, GASB statement 84 fiduciary activities. This, a lot of words, basically means that the board brought the student activities under board control. As you all know, I'm sure, so the student activity funds and then also the scholarship fund that used to be a fiduciary statement. Both of those are now part of the general fund, and we'll talk about that more in the numbers, just a touch, just a little bit. But basically what that means is that on the statements this year, there's, there's a restatement in the general fund for 128,000. That number is basically 7119 balance of the student activities and the scholarships being brought into the general fund. So then they will be in that fund going forward. So in the current environment with how the statement shook things up, you don't have any fiduciary funds that you like, like you have in the past. The only thing that would change that is if you have any trust agreements or custodial agreements or anything like that that pop up. But at this time you don't, and they're pretty rare these days, so. All right, so diving into some numbers. So this first slide here is unrestricted balance, fund balance in the general fund, so that's unassigned, assigned, non-spendable. You know, it's decreased a bit from last year. A lot of that is due to some special ed costs that we'll probably touch a little bit more on later, as well as some capital costs for the science room project. And that, that was also going on in 19 a little bit. The, the small numbers, you can't see them that well, but that 5.8% in 2020, that is, you know, the, this 1.3 million of fund balance divided by the total general fund expenditures for the year, that gets you that 5.8%. You got that 5.8% coverage there. I believe your policy calls for 5%, so you are above that policy and also looking, still looking solid there. Uh, so this is your restricted to reserve balance. So the, this is money coming in from the state revenue, coming in from the state that is reserved for specific purposes. So it can't be spent on anything. It has to be spent on, you know, has to be sent to staff development or gifted and talented, etc., whatever, you know, the state pegs that this money is for, that's what you have to use it for. So the number, the number this year, obviously, you can see jumped up quite a bit. So staff development went up 70,000 or so. And that's just, you know, those funds weren't all spent in 2020. But again, it is, it has, still has to be spent on staff development going forward, so it'll, it will be spent on that, you know, in 21, 22, etc. So then there's also reserved fund balances for area learning center, gifted and talented, medical assistance. And then also included in this number and another reason, main reason for the increase is the student activities and the scholarship fund balances. So scholarships were about 10,000 and then student activity is about 115. So those two coming in this year, they fall under this bucket now, and they will going forward. So you would expect this number to be a little bit higher going forward with those new fund balances included here. Operating capital fund balance, as you can see, pretty much exactly the same all through the last five years. So this is, you know, again, it's state restricted revenue and it, you know, it's used for tech purchases, online hardware rentals, things like that. And as of right now, you're just using it as it comes in. So you get the money, you expense it out, the exact amount you get, and then you end up with the same steady fund balance here, so. Uh, long-term facilities maintenance. So this was new in 2017. That's why there's no balance in 16. And this is used, you know, it's going to be based off of your 10-year LTFM plan and when projects take place. So it can ebb and flow quite a bit based on, you know, when projects are happening and when, when they're due. And when those costs are come due. So, you know, in 18, you had some flooring done, you had a fire alarm upgrade and some other miscellaneous projects like that. Didn't have much going on in 19, so it remained pretty steady. And then in 20, you had the science room upgrade, some other projects as well that, you know, basically you ended up spending it all and actually went negative a little bit. This is allowed to be negative. There's no real issue. Again, you know, it, it's gonna ebb and flow. The levy dollars coming in each year will build this back up. In 21, you'll see most likely a positive balance here, and it'll most likely continue to increase unless you have, you know, the next bigger capital project that comes through. So it's all just kind of ebbs and flows based on that plan, and you guys have had, you know, a fair amount of not huge, but not small projects going on the last few years. So that's why, you know, it did go negative this year, but it'll, it'll go back up and, and that's okay. So this is your food service fund balance. So in 18, or in 19, I'm sorry, you had some meal counts decreased by about 8%. And then some unpaid fees. And then in 2020, you had budgeted to spend down about 16, actually, but only spent down about two, so that's good. And then one other thing to note here, Tahoe paid the district about 14,000 from that 2019 deficit. But that didn't come through until 21, so that's not reflected. So that, you know, 14,000 will essentially erase almost all of this deficit. And that's, you know, that's kind of the, the point of that, and going forward, you know, this fund should be able to essentially fund itself year to year, obviously with the pandemic, too, that certainly throws a wrench into how this fund operates, both in, you know, the spring and then this fall and winter potentially as well, so. And same with community service, so 16, 18, you're kind of, you had, you had school readiness, early childhood pathways. This fund should, you know, basically fund itself with these programs, like, you know, the cost should go out, but the revenue should be coming in to essentially just support itself year to year. In 19, you expanded on the school readiness plus program, so you, you know, spent down a little bit there. And then in 2020, you had budgeted, planned to be kind of steady as far as costs and revenues go. Ended up going down about 14,000, and that's, a lot of that's due to the pandemic. You had to provide free daycare in the spring and, you know, some things like that. So that kind of caused that to decrease a little bit. And frankly, you know, we're seeing much more massive decreases in, at other districts as well here in the community service fund. I mean, it's all over the board, but, you know, with the pandemic and everything that changed the spring, it, you know, it's throwing a wrench in things like this a lot, so. All right, so this is our capital projects fund, just throwing this on there one more year. We had the bond project back in 2016, and, you know, essentially you can see the last bits of those costs were spent out in 17, 18, and then now 19. It, it kind of cleared out in 19, and then now 20, there, there's absolutely no activity in that fund at all. So this slide will, will, will delete it next year and, you know, until there's a new bond or something like that, which will probably be a while, so. And this is, just wanted to show that, that, you know, this fund is done, it's closed out, that project is complete. That service fund, so in 2017, you see that negative number. I talked to Gwen and Corinne about this a little bit this, today. So there was something goofy with MD and the calculation they did that year. So it kind of miscalculated the levy. So anyways, the levy made up for that in 18, 19, as you can see, especially into 19, it jumped up quite a bit. So what this fund is doing is just pay, making your regular debt payments. So levy dollars come in. They go back out to make the debt payments, you know, so it should be pretty just steady, just making those payments every year, and that's, and that's what it's doing, so. So the next few are going to be a few pie charts here in the general fund. So this is, this first one is general fund revenue, and this is including, when I say general fund, this is including the online school. So 21.35 million of revenue, as you can see, you know, almost 90% coming from the state. The online school pulls all of its, or most of its funding from the state. It's not going to pull any from property taxes. So you have a, you know, pretty low property tax number at 4.9%. Most we see are in the eight to 10% range. So that's, you know, good to see as far as, you know, your, your community goes. But otherwise, you know, as far as looking at last year, this is very comparable as far as where your revenue is coming from, so. And then this is expenditures in the general fund, again, including the online school, so 21.8 million, just split up by object code. So where those costs are going, again, you know, very comparable to prior year here. And then this is that same 21.8 million, but split up by program code. So again, very similar to prior year. You can see, you know, regular instruction of the students, that's almost 63%, so that's going to be a majority of it. If you add up regular vocational, special ed, instructional, pupil support, so those five from the left over to the top. That gets you to about 89, little under 89%. So that, that is the percentage that's going, you know, directly to the instruction of students right into the classroom. And that percentage is really high, based on what, you know, other districts that we work with, usually we're in, we're lower than that. So that's a really good number as far as, you know, just putting the money, you know, where the purpose is, you know, where the, where the students are, so. That's a good number to see. This is ADMs, five-year trend on ADMs, including online school. Gwen and Corinne tell me that 21 is going to be off this chart by a lot, so that's good to see, obviously with the pandemic. Sounds like the online school is doing really well as far as enrollment this year, 21. So, you know, this is going to ebb and flow a little bit, but yeah, it's, sounds like it's going up quite a bit in 21. So then, these next few slides are expenses per ADM. The first few that I'm going to go through here includes the online, so that's, you know, the entire, the entire district. And then the blue on the left are five-year just averages for each year for the district. And then the green on the right is the, the total state average, and then the orange is the similar-sized district average. And this orange one here is 1,000 to 2,000 ADM average, because that is including the online school. So this first one, district administrative support services, pretty steady over the last five years. You know, a little bit of an increase with salaries generally increasing, but overall just a very steady number there. And again, way, way under your averages, so that's, you know, a good thing to see. Regular instruction, again, you know, it's pretty steady over the last five years. The online school certainly brings this cost up a little bit, because the majority of those costs go there, but, you know, so it's, it is over these averages. But again, that's, you know, to me, that's not a bad thing, because you're putting the money, again, you know, what we talked about on the pie chart, you're putting the money towards the students. And that's what regular instruction is for the most part, so. And then special education, so this one had a little, few changes. So in 19, you added an online teacher and a speech pathologist. And then going into 2020, it about a $250,000 increase in salary, and a lot of that was due to having to cover just a larger percentage of special ed expenses versus the residential than you have in the past. So that percentage increased, I want to say Corinne said 5%, and she can correct me if I'm wrong. But so that, so that 5%, you know, caused a pretty big jump there. But, but still, even with that, you know, you're well under the averages here. And that kind of speaks to the district's relationship with HVAC and just, you know, how they can help mitigate those costs a little bit, you know, serve the students properly, but, you know, keep the cost at a, at a good, good rate. This is instructional support services. In 19, you added a dean of students for the online school, so that's what kind of drove that up a little bit. You know, this year it came down a little bit, but overall pretty steady besides that dean coming in and kind of right, you know, right in between those averages. And this instructional support is, you know, staff development, library, media, stuff like that, so. Okay, so then, these last slides are just the local district, so not including the online school. So this is the ADMs just for the local district. You can see, you know, it was on a very, very slow decline, and then, you know, this year kind of jumped back up into the 430s that it has, had been in the past. And that's going to be a little bit of a indicator on a few of these slides that I go through in a sec, but, so keep that in mind. Again, so this is regular instruction, just the local school, same type of thing as far as, you know, we have four years trending here for the district. You got the green bar state average, the orange bar on this one is the average for the 0 to 500 ADM schools, because just the local, that's the, you know, bucket you fall under. So a little bit different averages. But again, you know, this one, same story, you're putting the money of the students over the averages, but that's not a bad thing. Vocational instruction, this has been pretty steady up in the high 300s. Again, you know, money going to students in 19, ADMs being down kind of drove this up a little bit more. And then drove it back down a little bit in 2020 with the ADMs back up, but otherwise pretty consistent. Pupil support services, in 19, you added a social worker here, and that's what kind of made that big jump from 18 to 19, otherwise pretty steady. Sites and buildings, this had a lot of different things going on. Last year, you had an asbestos project that kind of drove that up a little bit, otherwise it can remain pretty steady. As, as far as the last four years here, you know, this is going to be for utilities, repairs, custodial expenses, things like that. And you're coming in a little bit under your similar-sized district average, which is good. But the, the, the bigger districts, you know, on this one is, they're going to be able to kind of spread out the costs a little bit more when you have, you know, just more buildings, more, you know, more classroom, there's going to be, you know, you'll be able to spread out the cost a little bit more, which is why I'm guessing that average is a little bit lower, but. Food service, costs are up just a little bit. You know, it's been rising a little bit over the last two years, like we talked about on the fund balance slide. But again, you're, you know, you're still hovering under that similar-sized district average there. This is transportation, so, you know, you guys have your own transportation. A lot of districts have contracted transportation. So with having your own, there's a few things going here. One, you can see over the last four years, you've been able to keep your costs well under that of your peers and of the state, which is great. And then also in 2020, this cost decreased quite a bit because the school closed for fourth of the year, or whatever it was. And so you had, you know, trans, and plus no fall, or spring sports and all that stuff, you know, driving around and all of that. So all of that, you know, equates to a decreased cost here. And, you know, having your own transportation helps with that, because if you're contracted, good chance you're still paying. You know, even if you're not using, you're still paying, so. Big win, I guess, for, for you on this one, this year especially. Community service, this kind of goes right in line with, you know, the fund balance slide, but, you know, you're expanding the programs a little bit in 19. In 1920, expenses in this program were actually exactly the same within a few hundred bucks, both at, you know, like 186,000. So ADMs just being up a little bit this year brought this average down, but the total cost is almost identical, so. Nothing too crazy going on there. And then, this is your final slide here, capital expenditures. So this is gonna, you know, kind of ebb and flow with projects going on, obviously. So 18, you had a bus garage, parking area stuff, you had tiles, fire alarm project. 19, you had the science room, you bought a van and a bus, and then in 20, you had the science room project and most of that coming in there. So, you know, this one's going to ebb and flow. I would expect next year it'll probably decrease quite a bit. And, you know, it's, it just kind of depends on when those projects are happening, just like with the, a few of those fund balance slides. It's when the projects happen, when those capital costs come in, and, you know, so that's going to go up and down a lot, so. Okay, well, that is my presentation. Does anybody have any questions or anything before I open that up? You know, I just want to say, you know, thank you to Gwen and the team. Everybody did a great job. We had to do the audit basically fully remotely, or not basically, did do it fully remotely this year, which added some challenges. But, you know, we were able to get through all that without much issue. You know, that it went well, you know, no, 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 no concerns or issues that we saw, and, you know, a clean report, so. Anybody have any questions or anything?
Jean, what's your question?
Luke mentioned in terms of the, when we had the revenues, that our local taxes amounted to about 4.8%. And I think the other was almost that amount. And what was that other that it was just as much as?
So let me pull that back up just on my end here. So other is going to be a few different things, but the, sorry, I'm trying to just pull up a little detail for you here. But, you know, one, one thing is the student activities, so that, that activity this year is now lumped in with other. So that did tick up other a little bit. But I'm just trying to pull up here and see what else is in there. Yeah, so it's, you know, there is a lot of miscellaneous revenue in there that I, I don't know too much detail on. Gwen, do you have any additional information on what that is made up of? Did you have?
A lot of it is, like, E-rate is in there.
Right.
Probably.
There, the 099 miscellaneous revenue, there's like 600 and some thousand, that's what most of it is.
Oh, that's our, that's our amount that we retain for the online programs.
Okay, yeah, so that's part of the online school coming in, so, yeah. So that makes sense, yeah. And then, like I said, yeah, the student activities also do fall under that bucket, not that that is the biggest portion, but it is. Did increase that other a little bit.
That answers it, so.
Any, any other questions?
So can I just clarify? Jean, I appreciate that question, because is it fair to say then that the revenue from the online school is almost the same as what we get from local property taxes?
Well, the, the online revenue portion was about 650, maybe?
Yeah.
Property taxes are about?
About a million, so, close.
It's about 60% of what we get.
About 60, yeah, about 60%, yeah, right.
Okay, it's significant when you compare them.
Certainly, certainly.
Any other questions? If not, thank you so much for coming tonight, Luke. I know that you've got, well, your firm's got two other meetings tonight, so.
Yeah, we got, you know, we got meetings all over the place, but it's no big deal, so. You guys are most important. But yeah, no, I appreciate it, you know, we appreciate doing, you know, doing the audit for you guys every year, and hopefully we can continue that relationship. And good luck with all the, the changes coming this, this winter season, and, yeah, hopefully 2021 turns, it turns around a little bit for all of us, so.
Our state epidemiologist today said it was going to, so I.
All right, we'll take, we'll just take his word for it, yeah.
Okay, thanks again, Luke, appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Bye.
Okay, back. Hey, Alan. Okay, moving right along, we have the COVID-19 update.
I'm not going to read the whole thing. We had executive order 2103 that was issued on Wednesday. Since it was issued, I have been in meetings trying to figure out what it really means, because there's a lot of contradiction. So that's, I was in a meeting today with Jacob Zidane and Audrey Stagemeyer. Jacob is our state-appointed epidemiologist, and Audrey is our county health nurse, trying to figure out what that. trying to figure out what that really means and what's really required. I had a meeting today from four until five and there was a lot of contradictory information, so the superintendents had a second meeting after the meeting to just try to figure out where we actually should be. What we've got going on here in Houston County is our numbers seem to be going down. Today, our zip code numbers that got released, we had nine last week. That's single digits. We haven't had single digits. On the first, we had double digits in November 5th, November 5th, we haven't had single digits since then. So you have to go back into October to find a week where we were in single digits for numbers of case and new cases in our Houston zip code. That's really a positive sign. I know our county numbers still look like they're going up because the number that got released today was 134 and we're slated to be 120 in the 120s next week. And so the numbers are going to be high for a while, but from what Audrey is seeing and from what Jacob is seeing, the numbers are coming down. And so I know as the COVID committee, we talked about, do we have to still adhere to the, the number 30 before we could bring high school students back? With Executive Order 2103, most of you have heard the governor has said that students at the elementary school, it's a priority to get them back in school. So if you hadn't already agreed to bring students back on January 18th, you can bring them back in person. However, if you bring them back January 20, January 18th, you must do a rolling start. And for a rolling start, what that is, is you've got three class, three grade levels that come in for two weeks. So that would be kindergarten one and two for two weeks, and then two weeks after that, we could bring in three, four and five for two weeks, and then we could finally bring in grade six. That's if we had started January 18th. Right now, the board action was to start again January 11th. If we start on January 11th, we don't have to do the rolling start. So if we start on January 11th, we can bring all of the students in the elementary back in hybrid right away. We don't have to hold the sixth graders out for, for. And with that, the other thing is if you're changing between learning models, we must give teachers two days of planning. So we will have to have two days, no student contact and so that the teachers would have the time for planning. That is part of Executive Order 2103. And just to let you know, the fact that I'm saying Executive Order 2103 means that we have dealt with 103 executive orders so far this year. That, that is mind blowing, absolutely mind blowing. There, there's a lot in this new executive, sports will be allowed to start practicing January 4th. There is no schedule yet for games. There are different schedules that are being bandied about, but nothing positive yet or nothing actual definitive yet from MSHSL. As soon as we know about a game schedule, I will let you know that. Since we are in distance plus, we are allowed to still have practices. If we have practices starting January 4th, we will follow our athletic director's plan to pod and to make sure that the students, if one of them does test positive, no one else in that team or in that gym will have to be considered a close contact. And then there's a whole bunch on that sheet you can read. And it came in late, so any questions on what I've said so far? I will, I'll do a superintendent update tomorrow and I will be putting more stuff on the website as well. But then for the COVID update, that's COVID update.
Anybody have any questions for Kryn at all?
Yeah, so was there something in there about voluntary testing?
Oh, yes, starting January 4th, if for any of, if we are in session, so with the distance plus, we, any staff that's here and dealing with students face to face has the opportunity to be tested bi-weekly. I'm not sure what our day is going to be. We will be given a day of the week. So it might be the, the first and the third Tuesday of every month. And those will be our testing dates. Deb Jurgensen, as our nurse, is going to be trained to be our test coordinator, so she will be taking care of all the tests. It's a saliva test, and so everybody spits on their own. She just watches them and then mails it all in for us. Josh, you had your hand raised?
So we have two regular meetings then before the 11th, is that right?
Two regular board meetings?
Yes.
Oh, you've got a board meeting January 7th. And that's something that's going.
Nothing the end of December. I guess this would be it. This is our second one, okay. So we have one more, and then is the, the committee, the COVID committee, they're meeting weekly through this?
We are not meeting on the 29th. But we are meeting on the 22nd. It's, there's no, after this executive order came out, there's no way we can't meet on the 22nd.
I was just, I was just wondering when the board was going to be, you know, privy to the decision and, you know, when, as we're getting, getting through the holidays, that's all.
Well, and there, there's a board item up here as far as the authority for learning model changes because it's, and we'll, we'll get to that later on in the meeting.
Kryn, I just wanted to ask, the committee will decide, like, for instance, it's great if the rates come down and we can come back on January 11th. I think that's wonderful. And if they're down to a certain level, would we then bring elementary and high school back as well, or are we only looking at elementary? And then my next question is, if the rates are still high, let's say they're over 100, do we know what the threshold is for not bringing the kids back on January 11th? I understand it's complicated to do this rolling start, but if the rates are high, I assume we have to wait. Maybe you could speak out of it.
Elementary no longer is bound by any numbers. So the elementary decision-making is not bound by county or local numbers anymore.
But I have to, I have to argue that we are because if we have community spread at a certain level, we won't have teachers, we won't have bus drivers, we won't have kids, and everybody will be in quarantine. So we can say it doesn't affect us, but we all know it does, right? Because we won't have kids in school, we won't have teachers in school, we won't have anybody to teach or do the work.
And, and the other thing that, that came out of the meeting, currently in the county, we have had 1,044 people test positive for COVID. We've got 18,600 people in the county. That means that 5.6% of the people in the county have tested positive. And so then Jacob said, when you're looking at what the, the rate is for exposure, we have probably gotten to the point where the majority of people in the county have been already exposed to COVID. And have just not, have either not come down with it or have not gone in for testing because they were asymptomatic. And so Jacob was was really very hopeful about bringing students back. Yes, Pete?
My question is, do we have any numbers on the amount of our staff of the bricks and mortar school that have gotten COVID at this, at COVID at this time?
We have had some. And I, I know the numbers that have been in, in quarantine and exposed. We had 18, when we went to distance learning, we had 18 staff members in quarantine, so either they were positive or they were in close contact with someone who was positive. I don't know how many of those got tested and actually came back with a positive because at that point, there was no benefit to getting tested because your, your quarantine was going to be the same whether you were positive or not, if you were a close contact. Now that is, that it's changed. And you can now test out of quarantine faster if you follow or if you meet certain criteria. There are some criteria where you'll still have to stay in 14 days, but testing is a benefit. So if you test and you meet the criteria, you can maybe get out of quarantine in seven days instead of waiting the full 14. So there is a benefit to testing.
Yes, and Kryn, as I found out, having COVID myself, I didn't know this, you know, probably everybody else on the board knows this. You do not have to get COVID. I was called by the Red Cross and when I said to them, so that must mean that I had COVID, their response was, no, you don't need to get COVID to get the antibodies. You can just build up the antibodies due to being exposed heavily. So I would guess that some of those people that have been exposed probably have the antibodies too.
And without testing, we have no way of knowing that and we can't force anyone to test. The saliva test is not an antibody test, it's a, it's a test for active COVID.
To my knowledge, I think the only way is by giving blood that you can be tested for the antibodies.
There's other places where you can pay to get the antibody.
Yeah, you're correct, you'd have to pay for it, correct, yep.
But as far as staff, I'm, I don't have those exact numbers and it's, it's a data privacy thing. So Deb doesn't share that. Deb Jurgensen does know, nor can she share it, it's HIPAA.
Okay, thank you.
But we will, we will get to that herd immunity. But that also means that to keep that, the antibodies, they're not sure how long those antibodies stay, so as soon as the vaccines come, I am hoping that most people who can get vaccinated will get vaccinated. Any other questions?
I just, just a comment is that we can talk about, you know, whatever we think the rates are and this and that, but at the same time, it's going to be extremely difficult on the teachers and the staff to juggle because I guarantee there will be classes that have to quarantine and teachers that have to quarantine and bus drivers that have to quarantine. So it's just, it's just going to happen. It's a lot of extra work. And my impression is we're a long ways away from herd immunity, but that's my, just my impression, so. But I, if the rate is at a certain level, I think we might be banging our heads against the wall and actually potentially it would be a better education not to fight that wall and have the consistency to stay home, so just my two cents.
Okay, anybody else have anything else to bring up? Communication upgrade link.
I brought this to the board May 2019. Our website is archaic as I'm trying to put things on, as we're trying to put links on to the, the new hiring and application site that we're using. It, it is not, if we're really going to be talking about communication being one of our focuses, if we're really going to be talking about outreach to the community, we need to do a better job and we can't do a better job with the website we currently have. La Crescent went with Aptige a year and a half ago because they saw all the, the flyers that Aptige had created for Houston. And so they looked at it, they called them, they actually went with Aptige and their principal, Steve Smith, said, it really has been wonderful during this time because they can have one message and click four buttons and it's sent out. It's really easy to use on a mobile phone. So the same message will go out on Facebook, on the website, they've, they've got on the website, there's, there's a live link as far as just news, they call it Thrill Share. And so it, it does the text messaging, we can do the phone calling right through there, so we don't have to have Shout Point anymore. And they're upgrading Shout Point, so that's, that price is going to go up, so we would save that money. It, it ends up being a little more expensive. There would not be a day where we wouldn't have a website. They build it and then it's just, they turn the key and we switch from our school today to Aptige. If we go with it now, the setup fee would be $12,000, except they'll give us 60% off. So they'll do the setup for 4,800 instead of 12,000, which is why I'm asking to make the decision more quickly, but it, it is something we've looked at before. Last, in May of 2019, when we were looking at this, we'd actually been looking at several different website vendors over several months. Of all the website vendors, the administration at the time felt that Aptige was the best one. And the comment was made that it was a newer company and you didn't know about the longevity. Well, now more and more schools are going with it. There are several schools in Minnesota that are going with it, and so they've got the, they've got the toehold now that they, they will stay in business.
When do we have to make the decision on going with them, Kryn? Is that tonight, or is this next week?
The decision would be made January 7th, but I need to call them and let them know whether it looks like the board would vote, not that you're voting today, but I, I need to know if there's any, if the board is thinking that you would say yes, or if this, if it's an automatic no, there's no sense in bringing it back to the board. There's no sense to waste their time again, but it's.
I, I know for me, I know, like you said, we talked about this a few years back. And I think it was something on the teachers have access to a page or something also that is incorporated on this and.
Each teacher has a page, each teacher can add things. The, the principals will have a way to look at it first before it's put on the website so that no one can put like a wild hair thing out there. There are checks and balances. But it's incredibly user-friendly. The teachers have their page that they can update and get information out to parents right away too. It really is a good communication tool.
I was curious, are, are we using it? Why, why are we having to pay a fee for the online per student online? Are we using it for MNBA?
There would, we would still have some MNBA things on there and they would still have different MNBA elements that could be used.
Is that an option not to do it for MNBA?
Well, I know Angela was looking at it. Angela was part of this decision too, and she really thought that there would be some things that she knows she doesn't need like the food service or some of those other things. But being able to interface with all the other schools would make sense.
So with La Crescent doing it, do they have a point person that, like, if you've got a bunch of people that can update their pages, like, who's responsible for updating pages? Or is it when people have extra time or how, I mean, does La Crescent have somebody that does that or and do we? Because it's, it seems like we've got the technology, but you still, like with our schools today, you, like even with the coaches, you still have. It takes somebody time to put the information out there.
Well, with this. It would be a lot less time, and so right now I'm trying to manage the website and manages part of the website. Mike manages part of the website and then Rick is supposed to do part of it. And it it's, number one, it is. It's really unwieldy, it it is not user friendly, it's not intuitive, it it is. It's not a good functioning website to use, it's very frustrating. Where this would be. A lot less time. We don't have a point person right now, really, we're just all trying to. Pull up the slack. Jean?
A question for.
With with that, you mentioned in terms of the sports and athletic and doing that, but we'll still have to have our school for doing that to put it up.
For the calendar, yes, for scheduling Minnesota State High School League sports use the our school today. Calendar scheduler, we would still have that for the community and scheduler, yes. Yes, Jean.
I was wondering, maybe, maybe before this seventh, maybe would we have to get the technology committee together? And look, talk over this and may have the technology committee make the recommendation before the seven.
Technology committee made the recommendation in two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
You want them to meet again to make the same recommendation.
Well, I I don't know, that's what I says, we, we said back in then, because we, that's when we were looking at the ADA compliance and everything else. And I know this is ADA compliance.
Yeah, it is, and then we wouldn't have to pay for that anymore.
Like Michaeline said, for, do we maybe need to get the people to put stuff up there and things on there to to get it up and? Have things, who's gonna be putting it up, somebody's, we're gonna have to have somebody pointed yet to okay it, because you just can't have anybody putting up. When you do like the Thrill Share, what I read on on Epigee, that they you have one guy, one person there. That will then gets that stuff and then they can go ahead and post it, but they're the ones that, even though you posted, it doesn't get posted. Until that particular person gives you okay to let it go on.
Which is. You read it and if it's good, you you click a button, that that's what. And I would not mind doing that, I would be that point person. Because right now, if somebody wants something on the website. I have to try to figure out where it goes on the website and today. Anne Anne has access to some things on the website that I don't have access to, and so we were trying to get a link to work. And it took two of us where this would be one person clicking a button and it's done.
Good, because I mean, right now, if you go out to the website and go through it, I mean, there's like, you go to the one and it's, it's got Matt Shuddy down for our technology. On that, it's, it's still got.
On what site does this have Matt Shuddy, Matt Shuddy?
On the hill, on the elementary school, it's got his picture and technology. And that it still has Zobek for art and things like that are a lot there yet.
Well, then, and I I can talk to Rick about making sure he's updating his site, Pete?
My question is, is at this point, Corinne, the way it sounds, we're not to vote on this tonight anyway. Do you just want some, some kind of lead as to if a majority of the board members would be for this? Or is there a general opposition to it, is that what you're really after for this meeting?
Yes.
So therefore, Tom, I don't know how you want to address that. That makes it a little difficult because we're not voting.
Well, I I figure we, you, once we go around and get the people's opinion on it, you know, like Jean had talked about it, Michaeline had a couple of questions on it. You know, Mimi might have mentioned something. Personally, I think there's some benefits to it. Because like Corinne said, basically all this stuff that goes through would go through the principals or the superintendent to be verified. And then they would okay it, so that's a stopping point from anything getting out there that we do not want out there as a school, I would hope anyway. So like in the grade school, the teacher's information, stuff pertaining to the grade school would go through Rick. And correct me if I'm wrong, things for the high school would go through Mike, I mean, you know, Michael and so on and so forth. So, but it would do it, it would allow teachers to bring stuff out or put stuff on there, which I would think if they had access, they may utilize it more. And it would, I don't know, it just seemed simpler to me. But that's just my opinion, so Mimi, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I I'm definitely in favor of it, the one thing that I'd like to just think more about and look at is it seems like it's about. Two to three thousand dollars extra a year for the online school. And I just don't know how much the online school would benefit from it, so that's the analysis I would like to do. But for our brick and mortar school, definitely in favor, I think it's too complicated to get things on the website and they don't get out there and we don't do communication like we should be.
Yeah, I think Jean brought up a good point, there's stuff on the site that's old that needs to be updated. And that could be because of the difficulty for someone to sit down and do that. So anyway, Josh, you're.
I I would be for it.
Pete, your thoughts on it?
Well, I I really like the check and balance system, I mean, the the principals are going to be reviewing what goes on there anyway, and I think that's a really good idea. I do agree with Mimi, the the price did go up. So that's a little bit of a concern, but I guess if it's a lot better program, that helps too.
And and I agree with you on that, Pete and Mimi, I just think, if you look at the price goes up, but if there's time that's saved, what's the value of the time of the? Especially, we're looking at administrative time, not, you know, just somebody, you know, off in the wings that's doing this. The time that's saved is Corinne's time, the principal's time, but to me, that's valuable. Anyway, that's my two cents, Jean, your thoughts?
Well, what I liked about it is unfortunate, because with the Epigee, I mean, it it's doing an app now. And you can do it on your phone and your small device, you don't have to be on a computer where the our school, school is more desktop or laptop. Or it's not mobile and more than, more of us are going to mobile and mobile apps, so we need to be moving in that direction.
Okay, Michaeline, you have more, you wanna add to that?
I I shouldn't, but as long as I'm here, my only concern is we spend for some technology without the rest of the plan to implement. So I know it sounds easy, it sounds like a a good technology, I'm not opposed to that, I just would like to know that there's a developed plan. For actually implementing it, deploying it and implementing it. It it took us how many years to get Schoology up and running, we paid for it for, you know, and we had other learning management systems before that. That costs some money because the implementation plan wasn't in place, that's my only, that's my concern in addition to Mimi's about. Making sure we're fully utilizing it if we're paying for it.
I I agree with you a hundred percent, Michaeline, I think this, if we were to change, it would be later on next year, correct, Corinne, around April, when would it start?
Um, it it takes three weeks, three months to build, so we would be looking at building in January, February, March and going live in April.
And so we could go, we could talk about, like Jean said, have the technology committee between now and then. Kind of review that whole planning on how we're gonna implement it and have them be part of that process if need be.
Sure.
Okay, Mark, your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Michaeline as well, you know, well thought of plan on how to implement, so we're not sitting there, you know, twiddling our thumbs and and spending money. While we're waiting, but I think generally I'm all in favor for it, I think that looking at the presentation, there's. I think you'll get a lot more community engagement, which is going to increase the communication capacity, so being it mobile and being a more of a user friendly platform, I think it'll be. It'll be a thing, a great deal more efficient, as well as I think, I think it's gonna automate a lot of stuff like Corinne was speaking to, I think that's gonna actually, you know, ding people as far as approval. So I think, I think that'll be, I think it'll be a good tool, but yeah, definitely some planning to get it in place.
Anything else?
And I don't think anybody else has anything you want to bring up, do we? Okay, so we'll put it on the next meeting. Thanks, everybody, for your input. So all business, items to discussion, approve, acceptance and oath of office. Corinne, you have a few people that wanna swear in?
Yep, we need to swear in. Mimi and Josh, so if you two, do you have the sheet there?
I'm good for this, thank you, Josh.
Okay, so. If if you could. Say after me. I hereby accept the Office of School Board Member.
Are we doing it at the same time?
We've done that before, if unless you want to do it individually.
No, it's, nope, we'll try.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure.
I'll just lip sync, Mimi, you can say.
No.
No, no, you have to say it too, Josh. Okay, I hereby accept.
I hereby accept.
You know, this might not work together, one at a time, okay, who wants to go first?
Mimi goes first, ladies.
I'll go first, yeah.
Okay, I hereby accept.
I hereby accept.
The Office of School Board Member.
The Office of School Board Member.
Of Independent School District two nine four.
Of Independent School District two nine four.
For a term beginning.
For a term beginning.
The first Monday in January twenty twenty one.
The first Monday in January twenty twenty one.
And expiring the first Monday in January twenty twenty five.
And expiring the first Monday in January twenty twenty five.
I swear and affirm. Keep going.
I swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of School Board Member.
The duties of the Office of School Board Member.
Of Independent School District number two nine four.
Of Independent School District two nine four.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Perfect. Hey, Josh? Same thing.
Since I have it in front, can I just read it off since I have it in front of me?
Perfect.
I hereby accept the oath of School Board Member of the Independent School District number two ninety four. For a term beginning the first Monday in January twenty twenty one and expiring the first Monday in January twenty twenty five. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state. And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District. Number two nine four, two ninety four, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Great. Now, you guys do need to come in and get those notarized. But thank you.
Done? Levy certification, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
And we. Talked about this, it's the keeping it flat, that's what you guys agreed to, and as far as it would be setting the property tax rate at zero point six one.
So moved.
Okay, Josh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mimi, discussion. Okay, all in favor, we'll do roll call vote, Mark?
Hi.
Michaeline?
Hi.
Josh?
Hi.
Pete?
Hi.
Jean?
Hi.
Mimi?
Hi.
Thank you all. Okay, organizational meeting, twenty twenty one organizational meeting.
We just need to set the time and and place, and we talked before about setting it on Thursday, January seventh at six o'clock via Zoom and streaming on the internet.
Okay, so that's motion, correct?
Someone's gotta make it, yep.
Yep, okay.
Make a motion that we have an organization meeting on June seventh at six o'clock.
January.
Second, yeah.
Okay, second by Pete, discussion, now, Mark, you won't be here for that, correct?
I will not, but I'll give, I'll give Corinne some input on the committee, she gave out me some information on the committees and what what's involved, so I'll throw some information to her.
Okay, if you have any other questions, just, you know, look at who's on it, you can always call one of those members and ask them also.
Absolutely, yep.
Thanks. Okay, so we have any further discussion? All in favor, roll call vote, Mimi?
Hi.
Jean?
Hi.
Pete?
Hi.
Josh?
Hi.
Michaeline?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Mark?
Hi.
Okay. Thank you. Authority of Learning Model Changes, Corinne?
Hey, um, this summer, the board did vote to grant authority to the superintendent to make emergency learning model changes. And we can't find that in the minutes anywhere, so I want it to be an actual board agenda item with an actual vote. With the the January eleventh or the January eleventh, as far as the elementary coming back or the high school coming back. We need to be able to move quicker than to constantly have emergency board meetings. And I know that I was granted authority, but then to be told that. They, as board members, aren't comfortable with me using it, it's. Either I have the authority and follow the recommendation of the COVID group or I don't have the authority. And so this is the the time for the board to discuss that.
And to, just at at this particular time, we can't meet before the organizational meeting. And the, if we were going to make a change from that January eleventh, we would need to make it before that Thursday meeting. So there is no option for the board to act in the beginning with an with an emergency meeting, so it is up to Corinne, so. In this case, and that's what we're, I just want to reconfirm that.
Yeah, but if you're, if. If the authority is given, it it wouldn't be just for this one case, it's it's not like you give an authority and then, unless it's just for this one. Instance, you're giving the authority and then the board wants to have emergency meetings for anything else.
Yeah, well, in this case, I mean, we can give authority, right, and you have the authority, but in this case, you will be making the decision because we will not be meeting. So we know that it's going to be you and the committee, that's what I'm trying to say.
Jean, do you have a question?
No, I was just gonna make the motion so we could have discussion or anything on it.
Okay, go ahead, Jean.
I'm, I move that we give the superintendent authority to decide the distance, to decide our. Plan along with the guidance from the COVID committee.
I second it.
Okay, motion made, second by Ireland, okay, so further discussion on it, I think it's, you know, kind of like what Mimi said, it's a good idea. Because it's a planning committee and Josh brought it up a minute ago, they're, they're meeting more frequently than the board does. And decisions do need to be made in a timely manner to make it to the best of our ability for the teachers and the parents and the students. So I think it's a good thing for them, because like I said, Corinne is gonna be taking guidance from the planning committee and I know. Going to be taking guidance from the planning committee, and I know there's a lot of discussion going on there, so it's. Not just, you know, on a whim, so. Anybody else have something? Mike Lane, you have something to bring up?
I'm just trying to remember from the previous discussion, and it wasn't in the minutes, so it's, my brain is. No better than what's not in the minutes, except I remember, I feel like. We agreed to grant the authority for Crin to go quickly to a more restrictive model. And that the board would be involved in coming back to a less restrictive model. That's the way I remember it. So anyway, I, I don't know, that's water under the bridge. That's, I'm just trying to say that's how I recalled it. I do like that the new plan, the executive order. You know, I'm sure it makes more pain in the neck for administration, but I like the plan of two days of transition for teachers when we are jumping from model to model. We had two days of planning for teachers when we were going distance learning, but no, no transition time in coming back. And I thought that was kind of rough for teachers possibly. Anyway, that's all I have to say on it.
Thanks, Mike Lane. Did anybody else have any discussion items they want to bring up? Okay, so we got a motion, we got a second.
I, I just think that.
Go ahead, Josh. Josh, did you have something?
He's muted.
I, I think it should be up to the board. That's all I was gonna say. And I think it also relieves the burden off of Crin to wear it, you know, solely on her shoulders. I mean, that's why we're put in place. You know? That's my thoughts as, because I'd like, I'd like to be able to voice it, and I'd also like to. Not have Crin wear it completely, the good and the bad with it.
Except I don't, I don't make any decisions. On, on my own, it's all the committee and committee recommendation, because it's. It's not just my decision. It's got to be based on what's good for the staff, what's good for the students.
I, I think that, are we going to go back to the wording that we have? Because I thought it was wording from. MSBA or from the state that said, to what Michael was discussing, that we would give the authority, but. You know, the school board has the ultimate decision, so it was meant to be, if we couldn't meet, we have given the authority to Crin and the planning committee. Committee, but when we can meet, it's the board decision and the board has the chance to kind of override things as well. But there was specific language that I thought we got from MSBA and approved, so I think we should follow that language that we had before.
Okay, so. I believe that's what we're kind of saying here, correct, is we're going with the committee update, committee making the decision. Crin voicing the decision, and if there's any major or anything, then we talk to the board as a board to come up with anything. Drastic, I guess you want to call it. But we don't want to keep going back and forth. Where the committee makes a decision, then Crin. Has to wait till the board gets together and meet to make another decision or make the confirmed decision. I think it would just be cleaner since the committee, that's why we assign a committee to come up with a solution. That's going to work best for the students and the teacher, and then Crin just voices that. And I'm assuming that's kind of what we're voting on tonight, correct?
Yes, well, on January 7th, since we do need to. Well, actually, we'll need to figure out where those two planning days are going to go. And if we're not coming back on 11th, then the planning days would move later than that. And so as the, the planning committee needs to be able to. Make that decision on when those two planning days should be, because right now, I had a vote going into the planning committee and. As of 3 o'clock before I went into other meetings, I checked, I had nine votes on it, and it was split right down the middle. Five for January 4th and 5th, and five for January 7th and 8th, or four for January 7th and 8th.
So are you going to talk to the planning committee about that? Next week, so you can come up with a better, you know.
Yeah.
Who's on that committee? And I think those are the ones that are gonna want, you want to hear their voice, obviously, because they're the ones that are going to have to do all the work.
And there are two board members on that committee as well.
So, anyway.
But, Crin, do you have, do you have difficulty with, what if that committee has a split vote? Where it's 50/50? Is that going to be uncomfortable for you to make a decision based upon that split vote?
And so far, the committee, the committee might have a split vote, and then we have a conversation about it, and we try to come to some. Better consensus and, and finding that a better. Way to split that, so that everybody is comfortable with it. That's, the committee is run. Trying to find the way that everybody feels that the best interest of the students and the staff. Is going to be reflected in the decision we're making.
Okay, and as, as Mike Lane reverted to. At one previous time, the teachers were not given the two days. Preparation time, where now they're going to be given the preparation time. Where is the documentation that says that they're to be given that?
It's in the executive order 2103, they have to be given at least two days.
Okay, so that's covered already.
Just where that, where those two days are going to come in, because it's going to be two days in school for the kids.
Right, correct.
Is there further discussion, since we have a motion, we have a second?
I just am a little fuzzy on exactly what, are we voting on the language that we had prior? Or are we just kind of saying some things here and just kind of giving authority? I. I. Doesn't know what we discussed prior, because there was specific language in there about the authority that we were giving to Crin and the committee. And how the board's role. Was in relation to that.
Can you remember exactly how the language was written? I don't write off the top of my head, and I don't have it here.
I don't have that. I'm on the Dell computer instead of, it's on my Mac. And I don't have my Mac here.
But I'm assuming we're going off of the same language we had before, Mimi, just because we're rolling into a different year. And it's, you know, pretty much the same, like you said earlier. I mean, if it came to a situation where the board. Had to make a decision, if it was a major decision, I think the board would want to be involved, obviously. But if it's a decision that the. Plan, the COVID committee came up with. I think, you know, I trust those people to make the right decision, and Crin would just voice that. That's my thing, so. I mean, I think if it's a major decision, the COVID committee, since you're on it, you would say, well, maybe this needs to go to the board. You know, if it's something crazy, I don't want to have to do that.
Exactly where we were, and so we had to have all these emergency meetings. That, that, having that definition puts us right back where we were before.
Well, if we don't remember what the other verbiage was. You don't, and I don't.
I don't have it right here, I, that was on my Mac.
Well, and I would argue that. So if I just take the last time that we met for an example, if the board is meeting. Right after the planning committee, and it's still plenty of time, the board has time to meet and. Discuss, and the last time we ended up, it just, it was like waiting a whole week and another planning committee, and then it got to be too late for the decision, and it was. At its stress for the teachers, so I don't, I, I agree with Josh in that if it aligns for the board to discuss some of these things and vote. I mean, these are all big things. That's wonderful, and we should use the input from the planning committee, but. When it's got to be something quick, or it's got to be something last, more. Last minute on the rate, like four starting on January 11th, if something happens with the rate. On January 2nd, when Crin looks at the numbers, she has to make that decision, so I'm all in favor of that. But if we're looking at it from the other side, where the board has an upcoming meeting, and it works in the timeline, then have the board discuss it and decide.
So I, I pulled up from MSBA here that resolution. So there were three different, if I can, there were three different sections in the resolution, and section two says. The superintendent is hereby authorized after consultation with the board chair and notification to the school board to select and implement a different learning model. For the school district or any specific building without school board action, if the superintendent reasonably believes that prompt implementation. Of a different learning model is necessary, and that constraints of time and public health considerations render it impractical to hold a school board meeting to approve it. So I think that's the verbiage that I'm recalling. So. I, so I just found that.
Thank you. Gwen just snuck in with my Mac, so I didn't.
Oh, that's basically what we're voting on, correct, Crin? What Mike Lane just read. So does that clear the mud, everybody?
Yeah, I like, I like the fact that we have the verbiage, and then we have parameters around it, and it's, and it's there. I think that's good.
And as far as having the conversation with the board chair, our board chair is on the COVID committee.
Right.
And so that's what Jean's motion was, was what Mike. Okay.
Yeah, okay.
And then Pete seconded it, so. Any further discussion? So we'll do a roll call vote if everybody's ready. Mimi?
Hi.
Josh?
Hi.
Pete?
Hi.
Jean?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Mike Lane?
Hi.
Thank you. So, policies. For second reading, we have policies 201, 201, 202, 203, 203.1, 203.2, 203.5, 203.6, and 213. For your last little input there, Mike Lane, do you have any?
Motion, motion to approve.
Hey, we got a motion by Mike Lane, woo, second by Jean, thank you. This is Mike's last meeting, if nobody, if everybody. Want to utilize her. Any discussion? All in favor, we'll go around. Mark?
Hi.
Mike Lane?
Hi.
Josh?
Hi.
Pete?
Hi.
Jean?
Hi.
Mimi?
Hi.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to say a thank you to Mike Lane. She's been on this board, and one of her. Real pushes was to make sure that we have policies that are being reviewed. Appropriately, and following a schedule, and so she's. It has really been a benefit to the district to have her here, so thank you.
She was instrumental in making that happen. Thanks, Michael. Saves us all the heartache. New business and items for discussion, resolution, combining polling places.
We need to do this just to. It's an annual thing, but we need to do it before the start of the year.
So we need to have motion on this?
Yes, please.
Still move that we combine polling places.
Okay, second by Josh. Discussion. Okay, we'll do roll call vote, all in favor, starting with Mimi?
Hi.
Jean?
Hi.
Pete?
Hi.
Josh?
Hi.
Mike Lane?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Okay, thank you all. Announcements and events, MSBA. Learning Conference, the 14th, 21st, and the 28th of January. I don't know if we have anybody signed up for that, or?
Those are Thursday, and they're mornings, so. They're all virtual, but it's all morning conferences.
Crin, do you know if they're going to record any of those, or the guy wanted to go in and listen to them after the fact? Have you been told that yet?
I, I think they are. I know that I gave some information to Mark about them. They haven't given us all of the breakout sessions yet. I was hoping that they were going to do some phase one and phase two training at that same time, except the phase one training is. Interactive, so that's why they wouldn't record that one, so I'm hoping they'll do something live for phase one and phase two training.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on that at all?
Do we have to register? I don't think there's a cost for registering for them.
I don't think there's a cost, yeah, go on the MSBA site, and you can get the links.
Okay, we can register, or does Anne have to do it?
I think you can just go on and get the link, and if that is not accurate, then I will send out registration information to everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Okay, and media updates?
Just, once again, thank you to Mike Lane for all that you've done. A lot of years of service.
Yes, very good job, Mike Lane.
Well, you're welcome, so I'll share my last, give a round. Um, I, I did attend one of those Friday, or one of those MSBA. Friday morning, you know, board member MSBA coffees. And again, found it really quite informative, so the whole, it was a couple Friday mornings ago, and the whole discussion was on. How different boards in Southeast Minnesota do their communication stream, their communication protocols. And it was, it was quite informative to hear from a variety of different school boards what they have adopted for. Communicating in amongst board members and from the community, and how you deal with social media, and. Anyway, I'm just, it's, it was, those coffees are kind of an interesting way for MSBA to hear directly from board members. And so I just encourage you, if you see it and get a chance to sit in on one, you might enjoy it.
Thanks, Mike Lane. I don't know that we could actually thank you enough for all you've done for the board, and how many years we've been working together. I don't even know how many it's been. But, thank you.
Well, it's not probably as many as you and Mimi, it's certainly not as many as Ron, but I, I think I had 17 years in altogether. So anyway, it's time to, time to move to the future, so that's really a good thing. I'm looking forward to seeing what you guys do, so good luck.
Yeah, thanks again. So, anybody have anything else they want to bring up?
Um, as I, I have been asked by Valley View. Healthcare, they, they typically want to have an announcement out. To all of their, the people within their jurisdiction, and that's everybody in the Houston School District, so they asked if they could put a little blurb about their annual meeting. In the next Education Matters, and we're hoping to get one out the beginning of January. And so I said I would clear it with the board first, but I didn't think that that would be any problem, just letting people know about the annual meeting for Valley View.
Anybody have any issues with that? I don't see any issues. Okay, everybody's good, Crin?
Thank you.
Make it happen. So, with that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Okay, you have a second. Mike Lane? Oh, come on, okay. Okay, we'll do roll call vote, all in favor, Mimi? Okay, Jane?
Okay.
Pete?
Hi.
Josh?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Last but not least, Mike Lane.
Aye, aye!
Thanks again, everybody. You guys all have a good evening, and we will talk soon, I'm sure.
Yep, thank you.